Gentlemen, we have an amended agenda this evening. Are there any questions, any further comments? If not, if I could have a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt, sure.
Any discussion, Ms. Branch?
Mr. Hatchet.
Hi.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Chairman.
Hi. First up this evening, it's a real privilege to now the second time in a year to be able to do this. We are adopting Resolution 22-60 congratulating the King William Little League State Softball Champions. Incredible accomplishment. Mr. Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. It's my privilege to present to you, the players, the coaches, the support staff, and the league administrators, for the 2022 Virginia State Little League eight to 10-year-old softball champions from King William County.
I'll go ahead and ask Mr. Garber to read the resolution.
Resolution 22-60 honoring the King William Little League eight to 10-year-old girls softball team on winning the 2022 state championship title. Whereas King William County Board of Supervisors commends exceptional athletic achievement and gives special honor and recommendation to those athletic teams who pursue such excellence that they become examples for youth of this county. And whereas King William Little League eight to 10-year-old girls softball team achieved such excellence on June 24, 2022, by defeating Westmoreland Little League to earn the District 15 championship title, allowing them to advance to the state tournament and again on July 19, 2022, when they defeated Richland's Little League to win the 2022 Virginia eight to 10-year-old division softball championship in Coburn, Virginia. And whereas the team earned the first state championship title in the King William Little League's 43-year history to become the first eight to 10-year-old state championship in the history of District 15. Whereas Brooklyn Coleman, Malia Dabney, Candace Dixon, Ella Johnson, Ava Maxey, Brenley Mills, Michaela Richardson, Mackenzie Seals, Gracie Sluter, Cassie Smith, Lucy Vincent, Aubrey Walton, and Emma Wilson are excellent young athletes and together have demonstrated remarkable energy, enthusiasm, teamwork, and dedication in the pursuit of their goals. Whereas many contributed to the team's outstanding success, including their manager, Chris Wilson, as assistant coaches John Seal and Steve Walton, parents and the King William community as a whole. And whereas an educational system that seeks to teach the future leaders of our county, state, nation, the fundamentals of self-reliance and rewards of individual group effort, athletic competition has become a valuable tool. Through their participation in sports, the members of the King William Little League eight to 10-year-old softball team have learned lessons of good sportsmanship that will undoubtedly be of great benefit to them throughout their lives. Now therefore be it resolved that the members of the King William County Board of Supervisors, both individually and collectively hereby commend and congratulate King William Little League's eight to 10-year-old softball team upon the 2022 District 15 eight to 10-year-old softball division championship. And congratulate each member of the team and their coaches. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution expressing the sense of this Board of Supervisors shall be conveyed to the Little League and shall spread upon the members of said Board of Supervisors done this day, the 8th of August, 2022.
Thank you, Mr. Garber. Ladies, you haven't had to stand still for this long for a while, right? That's a remarkable achievement. Again, congratulations. This is something you'll, when you get a little older, you'll look back and wonder how it gets any better than this right now. I don't know, this is what it looks like, all that reading. But let's get a couple of close-in group photos with everyone. Can y'all maybe kneel down? And thanks to the coaches especially, and always the parents for your support, which you did and got these girls through. Again, incredible. And to be able to do this twice in one year is just amazing for us, the board.
From the other two board members also, the Council and Greenwood, I just cannot beat it.
Okay, so if I could run an official adoption of the Resolution 22-60, if I can understand a motion, please?
Motion to adopt, sure.
Second, any further discussion, Ms. Branch?
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Hi.
All right, thank you. Now it's official. All right, moving into work session matters, we have Virginia Risk Sharing Association, Versa, presentation. Ms. Nora Pierre. Is she on Zoom? Oh, and Mr. Peter Stevenson. Sorry, sir.
That's all good stuff, really good stuff.
Twice for us.
We didn't expect you to.
Yes, sir.
He's disrespectful. He dropped it on the floor and everything. I stumbled and staggered my way through that.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. We appreciate you having us this evening. I'm Nora Pierre, Senior Account Executive with Virginia Risk Sharing Association, or we also abbreviate it as Versa, formerly known as VML Insurance Programs. I'm joined today by Peter Stevenson, Local Government Specialist. Peter is the former Town Manager for Smithfield and member of Versa's Member Supervisory Board. Versa is the first and largest group self-insurance school in the Commonwealth of Virginia. We are a member-owned and govern self-insurance risk school through which a group of local political subdivisions members contribute to a shared fund that in turn pays, claims, and provides risk management services to the participating members. Versa is here to protect our members, King William County being one of them, and their employees so that they may effectively serve their communities. We do this with our financial strength, commitment to service, and our transparency. Some statistics about us and characteristics for FY23, we have 476 members, 62 million in annual contributions, 102 million in member surplus, which that does allow us to provide stable rates and coverages year over year to our members. And currently, we have 55 staff members. We really do pride ourselves on our staff and the fact that a member such as yourself, you are assigned a dedicated staff. So time and time again, when you have questions, when claims arise, you're dealing with same staff over and over again. Our coverages for FY23, the comprehensive coverages provided for King William County include automobile coverage, which is liability, and then physical damage as well, crime coverage, cyber, excess, general liability, Line of Duty Act, property, public officials liability, which covers your county employees, volunteers, and governing officials. It does not include any mandatory deductibles or primary aggregate. We also provide workers' compensation and a very new program that came out this year that you all elected to take is our workers' compensation plus coverage. And that coverage helps fill in the gap where the state statute for the workers' compensation limits certain things that are covered. So the workers' compensation plus fills that gap and helps it so that it doesn't have to come out of your budget.
Is there a change that created this?
No, sir. It's just that the statute through the Workers' Compensation Commission, they tell us what, they give us guidelines, and they tell us what would be considered a compensable claim. Certain things are not part of that. So for example, if you have an employee who has a compensable claim and they are in an altercation, let's say for an example, and their glasses are broken as part of that, so their injury would be paid for, their medical costs, and any prescriptions as needed and care that they need, but their glasses are not. And what we've found through the years by looking at data and handling the claims is that if their glasses are broken, what typically happens is they're going to show up in finance and they're going to say, here's the bill for my glasses. You know, I need to be made whole. And so that's where workers' compensation plus comes in. It helps bridge that gap in certain areas.
Mr. Chairman, I ask, public officials liability, what does that consist of?
That's going to give you coverage as being a board member here for the county in your duties while you're in the scope and duties of being a board member. So if someone sues you, let's say, for a zoning decision that you made, they don't like that, then you've got some defense coverage built into that policy to help provide and protect you in the scope of your duties. Yes. So we also provide training and resources because we're mandated through, through it being a risk pool here in the state, we're mandated that we have to provide risk management services. So we provide the insurance piece, but we really pride ourselves on the risk management part that we offer. Through that, we provide an online university that has over 300 courses. They're available to all of your staff at no additional cost. It's part of what we provide to you. We also have a multimedia library. We find that some people still want to rent DVDs and videos from us. We mail them out, mail them back, and you provide that training to your staff. We have a risk management grant that we offer. It just opened. Your staff has already taken advantage of that for this grant cycle. And for the past three years, you have been allocated $9,704 by utilizing our safety grant program. We also have a business continuity platform on our website to be able to house important documents that could be beneficial in case there's a catastrophic event here in your community. And that way, you would have access to documents in case your systems go down. So that is available to you. We also provide contract review, property appraisals, and a tenant user liability insurance program, also known as Tulip. That Tulip program is available to folks that might want to come and rent your facilities to help protect you. So if you're renting out a location for a birthday party or a wedding reception, those individuals can purchase what we call like an event policy to help again transfer that risk off of the county and onto those individuals utilizing your facilities. We also offer some online tools and applications such as our member dashboard that includes peer analysis. And we also recently provided out to all of our members an OSHA 300 log reporting application. We found through the communications with our members that tracking OSHA log requirements was pretty extensive, and we wanted to be able to utilize that. So that's a new tool that came out two years ago. We also provide webinars, workshops, and roundtable discussions for members. We have a cyber defense attorney at the ready for anybody that has a cyber incident. We provide also some online resources as well to help prevent those cyber incidences. We also have a member portal where your staff is able to look at the vehicle schedule, look at certificates of insurance we've provided out to entities, and also make changes as part of the renewal process that we handle annually. Great.
Thank you, Nora. And I'm going to touch on Versa Consulting. And again, largely falling under the realm of public officials liability. For those that have that coverage, we do offer again value-added, no extra charge for any of our time, whether we answer a simple question, spend hours, a full day, whatever, what have you, whatever our members need, we do our very best to assist, provide answers, and so forth. So we've got dedicated staff members in each of these areas that you see here. Human Resources, that's Tina on our staff. She answers so many questions, everything related to employment law and keeping HR directors on the straight and narrow and does a fantastic job. She's been with us quite a while. Risk Services or Safety Services, leave that alone for your account. Communications, that's Holly. She does a great job if you need help with crisis communications or you're wondering how to handle social media, things like that. She can help. Local Government, that's me, retired. My whole career was in local government here in Virginia, working for a city, a county, and two towns, and retired, as Nora said, after 23 years as Town Manager in Smithfield, still live in Islewhite, but happy to help and do help members large and small throughout the Commonwealth. Public Safety, Law Enforcement, Fire EMS, that's Gary on our team, and he's ready to assist members as well. In addition to the safety grant that Nora mentioned, I did want to mention and make sure that Mr. Ashcraft was aware. We do have a special earmark that we've had for a couple of years now for professional management development. So I know we've had a number of members that have applied for grants for the Senior Executive Institute at UVA, the LEAD Program, or folks that are taking courses in graduate certificate in local government management at Virginia Tech. And there's other. VCU has good programs, James Madison, you name it. But let me know if you have any interest, if you've got somebody that's up and coming, department head, or somebody that might need assistance.
Was LEAD Virginia?
Yes.
LEAD Virginia is in Edwardville?
The LEAD Program, absolutely. Yeah, we've got a member that's going to be taking this coming week in August. And we've had, we had two towns that did the December program. But yes, absolutely, the LEAD Program's covered. Let me know.
Mr. Ashcraft, was that the same or similar to what Steve attended or something?
Yeah, one of them, yeah. Yep, so that's a reimbursement grant that is out there as well. And Paul Workshops, as Nora mentioned, we've got those coming up next month. And the closest is going to be Great Wolf Lodge, York County, Williamsburg area. But we've got one in Fredericksburg as well, and then two in the western part of the state coming up next month. So unless there's any other questions, we know you've got a lot of items on your work session tonight. Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here.
Pleasure to meet you. Thank you.
Mr. Garber, any questions? I have one quick one. Does your liabilities coverage filter down to other boards, commissions, or just elected officials and staff?
It'll just be elected officials and staff here for the county. Yes.
So planning, economic development, or zoning appeals, et cetera, would be?
It would depend upon how they are set up here and if they are part of the county or if they are separate entities. So we would have to ask a few questions on that to see. But if they're part of the county and you've got a resolution or an MOU in place, then it would be part of what we provide to you.
And Mr. Ashcraft, there may be something we want to clarify sooner than later, something were to happen. Be nice to see that they're covered or not. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the time. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Dan.
Next up, we have an online budget tracking software demonstration. Mr. Hutchins, are you leading that one? Ms. Fine, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, very well. Thank you. Go ahead, please.
Okay, great. Thank y'all so much. I'm just going to flip over here. Oops, that's not what I wanted to show. Can you see it's time to budget better?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. So thank y'all so much for the opportunity to talk to you today about ClearGov. My plan today is to give you about a 10-minute presentation. First, giving you a little bit of background of exactly what ClearGov does. Second, I'm going to show you how ClearGov will make Julie and the finance team's jobs more efficient and how the Board of Supervisors can get more involved in the building of the budget. And then last, I'll show you what this will look like to residents, how it'll make King William County more transparent and help people understand the different decisions being made in regards to the budget. So let me get started. Also, I'll leave a few minutes at the end for y'all to ask questions. So to give you a little background, ClearGov was started in 2015. And as we've spoken to counties across the country and in Virginia and King William County specifically, we've learned that as far as putting together the budget, a lot of that is being done with Excel spreadsheets. If you know anything about working in Excel and building a multimillion-dollar government budget in Excel, there are a lot of emails back and forth, a lot of broken formulas, and a lot of Julie's job is bogged down with having to use these outdated methods. And then eventually having to get all of this information into a budget book that is currently in a PDF on the website. So we're seeing governments across Virginia say, look, we really need to modernize this process. Unfortunately, most GovTech solutions out there really aren't built for local governments, especially kind of the small to midsize ones. So that's where ClearGov comes in. Our mission is to create easy-to-use software to help local governments budget better. We believe that every community desires and deserves a government that works as effectively as possible. And recently, we partnered with the National Association of Counties as a preferred budgeting solution for its 4,000-plus county members across the country. They went through a very rigorous evaluation process of all the vendors in the space and chose ClearGov not only because of the ease of use for finance teams and department heads, but also because of the transparency pieces that are woven throughout the different modules. So we deliver what we call Just Write Software built specifically for local governments. And the way we do that is first, we're really easy to implement. So basically, we take a couple reports from your accounting system and we will do the onboarding for you. It's user-friendly, not only for the finance team, but for department heads and the board members. And information is displayed in a way that's easy for residents to understand. ClearGov also connects well back to your accounting system, and it's super affordable. So these are the five different solutions that ClearGov offers. Today, I'm going to show you a little bit of the back office tools. You can see how the finance team will be able to build the capital, personnel, and operating budget. And then I'll show you how all of this automates into an online presence to show not only your budget book, but also different KPIs, capital projects, and things of that nature in a transparency profile. So let me just exit out of here. I'm going to start with the backend operational budget. So starting out, let me let my computer catch up to me here. It says my screen sharing is paused. Let me try this. Strange. Can y'all see the operational budget? I think it's still, let me try to. It says that my screen sharing is paused, but it won't let me resume it. So let me stop screen sharing and then I'll try to start it again and see if that works. All right, so then share screen. Okay. Okay, sorry about that. Okay, so starting out with the back office and how this is going to help your finance team and the board. We're cloud-based. So when you guys are putting together the budget, instead of having to manage several Excel spreadsheets, emails, shared drives, et cetera, all of it's going to be here in one cloud-based location where you can log in securely and see the budget in one place in real time. I pulled the operating budget of a sample municipality here, just to give you an example of kind of what you would see. But I want to make a quick note also that ClearGov allows multiple types of users. So you can add administrative users that basically have master access to the budget. Instead of having to, so instead of having to them manage, sorry. So instead of them having to manage just their Excel spreadsheets, they only get a section of ClearGov where they can submit requests. But also, we can add, you know, board members so that you can watch the budget getting built and ask questions during the process instead of having to wait, you know, for a board meeting. So you can see the different progress bars here, which allows the finance team to keep track of who has submitted their budget requests. You can see if there's a projected surplus or deficit. You can see if there's a projected surplus or deficit. Um, you can see, uh, you know, like I said, the graphs, uh, down here will update as you make updates to the budget. And you can watch the budget getting built and ask questions during the process, instead of having to wait for those board meetings. Um, and then also, uh, you know, these graphs will here will give you the ability to see historical, uh, budget versus actuals. And, um, as well as, you know, instead of your eyes just glazing over, looking at just cells on an Excel spreadsheet. This is showing you actuals or budget versus actuals for past years for the different areas of your budget. So it really just brings that data to life, helping y'all make better informed decisions. Uh, and then down before, down below, this is where we make some adjustments to the budget. This is a sample chart of accounts, but it would, of course, reflect exactly what you would typically see in your chart of accounts. Uh, but you'll notice that there are ways to come in and change the dollar amount or percentages, uh, for different categories or line items. You can even make comments, uh, add attachments and make notes or add justifications as to why certain changes are being made. There's also a full audit trail up here at the top. Uh, which allows your finance team to see, uh, if there are changes being made to the budget. Who made those changes, when they made them, you know, all that kind of information. Um, so the next part I want to show you is what this will look like to the public. So the first thing I want to show you is the budget book, this is the, you know, currently King William County is presenting their budget book. Book in a way that most counties are putting this out in a print-first kind of web-second format. In other words, you're putting together this printed PDF through Word and then posting that printable format online. And the issue was with that is that, first, every time you make an update to the budget, this needs to be re-uploaded. And second, the average resident sees, you know, this hundred of pay, this document that's hundreds of pages long. And doesn't really know where to find the information they need in a, um, easy-to-understand way. So they end up spending way too much time scrolling through and looking for information. So ClearGov will take this document here and you'll be able to automate building an online web-based budget book. Uh, this is an example of one of your neighbors, Orange County. Um, but you can see that if I'm a resident, it's much easier for me to find, kind of hover over these categories here at the top. And find exactly what information I'm looking for in an easy-to-read format. With all of the charts and graphs and, uh, financial pages, all of the fund pages, department pages, capital projects. They all have their own section with all the charts and graphs made automatically. And the best part is, as you make changes to the different parts of your capital, personnel and operating budget. All of that information will automatically flow into the digital budget book. Uh, so that the finance team won't have to worry about coming in here every time a change is made. And making sure all these charts and graphs and line item details, uh, are, have the most up-to-date information, all of that will update automatically. In addition to the web-based format, all of our digital budget books have the ability to be saved as a PDF and printed. All you have to do is click this print button and put in your email. And then a PDF will be emailed to you, actually have here, uh, with all of the formatting done automatically. Including a table of contents, a glossary, all the charts and graphs, uh, in your digital budget book. Um, I would say that ninety-nine percent of our Virginia clients have both a link on their website to the digital budget book as well as a PDF. So really, nothing has to change as far as what you are providing to your residents. You're actually just adding, uh, a digital version to what you're already providing, uh, with that link on your website to the digital version of your budget book. Um, it looks like my screen sharing was paused again, let me. I don't know why it keeps doing that, let me try this again, okay. Um, so, uh, finally, I just wanted to take you through the transparency solution. Whereas this digital budget book is more of a snapshot in time of what your budget looks like for the next year going forward. The transparency solution, uh, allows you to show your residents up-to-date budget versus actuals information throughout the year. Um, so this is Herndon's, uh, digital or transparency website. So you can see residents will be able to click into the different sections up here at the top. They'll be able to put in things like their property tax bill. And see a breakdown of where their taxes go in whatever level of detail you want. And all of this, these charts and graphs are made automatically, just based on your budget numbers. So they can come in and they can click in, um, to the different sections, um, on both a revenue and an expenditure basis. Um, to see, you know, your budget versus actuals and how this year compares to prior years. Also, we have a direct API with the Census Bureau, so, uh, each, um. The the county will have a, this demographics may page made for you automatically. With, um, different breakdowns, like a total versus daytime population breakdown. Um, uh, population breakdown by age, a household breakdown. An economic breakdown, including how you compare to either similar counties or the state average. Um, even housing breakdown. So you can add any additional information in there, just kind of helps, uh, kind of give a better overall picture of what, uh, your budget is, is, uh, providing for. And then finally, this project page works with the capital budgeting tool. And so all of your capital projects will be, uh, here in both map and in, uh, list form. So a resident will be able to click on whatever project they're most interested, interested in. And see a really nice professional-looking webpage, uh, with any images and supplemental attachments, um, the project budget. Uh, if there's a dedicated project manager or the current phase of the project. They can even click on this subscribe to project updates button and get an email, uh, whenever this page gets updated, uh, with whatever the updates are. So it's a really nice, easy way to keep your, uh, keep your residents informed, um, and engaged and also add a level of transparency. Um, to both your, uh, financial information and any additional kind of department information as well. So that's about it, I know that was a lot of information, any questions I can answer?
Just to check up on that, well, how many localities are currently, uh, using this?
Sure, we have, I think, uh, over eight hundred, um, total, eh, across the country and Virginia specifically. Um, I think we have ten to fifteen, the other counties, uh, that are our clients are Orange County, obviously. Goochlin County, Amelia County, Essex County, Grayson County, um. I know I'm forgetting some, uh, Herndon, um, Hopewell, Pecosin, uh, Strasburg, Abingdon. And 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 again, I'm sure I'm I'm forgetting some of those, but those are some examples.
Yeah, at one point, you've mentioned that you could ask questions in relationship to the budget. Uh, the board members could.
Mm-hmm.
After that question is answered, can the, all the board members see that?
Yeah, so, eh, in the, in the operational budgeting piece, let me go back here. So, uh, you know, as long as the board members are given, you know, uh, basically viewer access to the budget. They'll be able to see all of the conversations with, you know, on the specific line item that they pertain to. So let's say you had a question about this animal shelter safety training, uh, line item. You'd be able to see the back and forth, you know, the, um, you know, whatever questions you want to ask the person assigned to this particular part of the budget. You know, you can, you know, whatever you want this to be, um, they can add attachments, but you'll be able to see those conversations and who, you know, who said what throughout the budget process.
And one more, is this gonna entail another employee to manage it?
Oh, absolutely not, we were really built for smaller to mid-size, um, uh, municipalities, so the majority of our clients have one, maybe one. Um, staff person who manages this and it's, um, you know, it's not a full-time job, it's very easy. Um, just, just, this is just replacing your current, um, what you're currently doing during your budget process. Um, and kind of bringing it into the cloud and streamlining it, so it won't require any additional resources as far as staff.
This is, uh, this is something, Mr. Hodges, we could do what-if drills instead of asking. Ms. Funkhauser or Ms. Jorlin to go back and print some numbers for us and come back at the next meeting, we can do this real time. Correct, Ms. Fine?
Yep, yep, that's correct, for all the different modules, so we have a capital budgeting module and a personnel budgeting module as well, you'll be able to run. You know, pretty complicated what-if scenarios, for example, you know, what happens if we get. Um, or or what happens if the, uh, firefighters get a two percent coal adjustment, uh, this year and a three percent. Um, you know, overtime increase next year, for example, or what happens if our health insurance costs increase? You know, five percent this year and six percent in three years. Um, so those are personnel examples for capital, you'll be able to create scenarios and see how the different capital projects. If they are, um, approved, what effect they'll have on your different funding sources for however many years in the future. So, you know, let's say you wanna, this has been very helpful for ARPA planning, you know, what happens if we spend X amount of the ARPA funds on these five projects? Um, you know, what will that, what were these funds look like in five years? Um, you know, things like that, so it's very complicated. Um, uh, what-if scenarios and and it's, it'll create some reports that will allow the finance team to present. You those scenarios with visuals and charts and graphs, um, which will make it much easier for you to. Not only understand the, this scenarios, but also when a resident has a question during the budget process. You'll be able to much easily, you know, um, either give them information or, um, explain to them the different, you know, whatever their, that their question is, is about.
Thank you.
Okay, I've got enough questions there.
Is this software linked to our present financial stuff?
Yep, so it'll, so, so we will set up your chart of accounts, basically, the finance team sends us a couple of reports from your accounting software, so your. Budget versus actuals for prior years and then the way your chart of accounts is set up. And then we set that up for you, uh, on the backend. Um, and so all the information will, you know, talk to each other. Um, so it'll, but so, short answer is yes, eh, we we interface with your financial software.
Well, we've heard that before.
Yeah, so, so you.
Sure.
They, hey, that that was my question, that's a good question.
Sorry, I, I.
Are you familiar with the Edmonds software?
Oh, yeah, Edmonds is actually one of our partners, uh, so, so we have several or many clients in Virginia that use Edmonds. Um, uh, let's see, Abingdon does, uh, Grayson County, um. I think Essex County uses Edmonds, uh, but yeah, Edmonds is one of our partners, so we, uh, not only will we have. Um, it will be very easy to set up your account, but also in this report builder tab, there's Edmonds reports. Um, specifically for Edmonds, so getting the information, you know, back and forth from Edmonds will be very easy. So you can see here, there's an Edmonds report right here.
Yeah, she said it was super important. All sales, right?
I'm happy to go over pricing if you'd like.
Not right now.
Okay.
Ms. Fine, on training, is, I assume there's an initial training, is the recurring training and?
Yep, so our, our pricing is, is, uh, all-inclusive, so you pay an annual cost, but it's unlimited training, unlimited users, unlimited customer service. So usually the, there's, um, so you can have as many trainings as you'd like, usually there, the finance team will get a training. And then the department heads, uh, will get a training, um, and then, but also throughout the life of your account. Um, if someone, you know, you have a new staff staffer join, you know, they are, we're always available to give additional trainings. There's also a very robust, um, kind of learning center on the backend. With, um, really easy to understand kind of videos and, um, webinars and stuff so that they can, um, do kind of self-led training as well.
Everything that is done in the building here is backed up on one of your servers, I assume?
Yep, we, yep. Everything is in, uh, on our servers, uh, it's the AWS servers, which are the same servers the, uh, Secret Service and FBI use, fun fact. So it's very secure.
Any other questions? Gentlemen? Well, Ms. Fine, thank you very much, this is, uh, extremely interesting, looking forward to possibly, uh, subscribing.
Sounds great, let me know if y'all have any other questions, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Y'all have a great day, thanks, bye.
Next up, we have, uh, draft ordinance twenty-two. Talking about, or did we, did we scratch that?
Updated, it's fair.
Yes, updated the text. Mr. Hodges? I didn't even back.
And by the way, gradually. She can, she can tell you. Okay, she'll tell us.
You don't have to say that last name any longer, oh, it's an easy one, Brown.
Okay, now you.
Everybody should make a big relief.
He's just getting used to it.
Yeah, I know. So tonight, to address the increase in that vehicle values based on NADA staff recommends a special tax rate for vehicles at two sixty-six per one hundred. This will allow revenues to be met as projected for the FY twenty-three revenues and all allow. For the additional count of vehicles that was established after budget approval. Uh, staffer recommends approval for, or requests approval from the board to move forward. To, with a public hearing on August twenty-second to address tax ordinance. And then we have included some information. Couple of different spreadsheets that which explain, you know, the difference between, um, West Point and county. Keep in mind, when the, when we talk about the county tax rate, there is a ratio that. Whatever we determine our county tax rate is, the ratio has to match what the West Point pay. That's the West Point taxes driven by that ratio, foot levy. Best way to think about it is, King William as a whole. Pays a tax rate and then anyone that's in districts two through five pays a school tax rate.
You know, I think I asked a while back, I don't know, I got a response, if we did this on all personal property, would kind of. Where would we be financially?
It wouldn't, we, we would not meet the revenues that we need to, definitely.
That's my, that's your answer.
Right, the, the reason why we're even presenting this is because the NADA values on, eh, on vehicles is just skyrocketing. And to tax the citizens at that value is, I think, what did we determine, Karina? If we were to take, left our tax rate for just vehicles. It would bring in our, the county an additional two-point-two million dollars.
Yeah, that's right.
And that is not anything we need to burden our citizens with, is how we felt.
Now, is that, you know, looking, now I'm going back to memorandum. It's saying that they're looking at vehicles at twenty thousand, I haven't seen too many twenty thousand-dollar vehicles, that's just average.
Eh, yeah, it was, I thought would be a good price. Because that could be a brand-new vehicle, it's a sixty thousand, too, so.
Mr. Hodges, what is, uh, West Point's projected rate, do you know?
They're retaining, they're doing the same rate they, they are, yeah, and what is, uh, you know? I really don't know.
I think it's two fifty-four, yeah.
Yeah, that's right, it's two sixty, yeah.
I think they were three twenty-four last year and it dropped.
Right.
We were looking at that.
But they did it on everything, and that's why I still have these dollars here to look at that and think about. If it's gonna harm us, then we can't do it, you know, that was the whole idea that. Without the county losing revenue, what we have to cut services, what can we give back?
Right.
It just looks like two sixty-six is the.
We just realized there's four hundred and forty-six new vehicles from last year.
Yeah.
So there's.
Outside, outside of the town, there's also nine, two, yeah, the town, so, over five hundred.
Yeah.
Right.
So that forces a little revenue increase, but.
But that don't mean brand-new cars, that just been correct.
And that would just, and and what we did was, the rate that we presented to you would just capture. Those new vehicles, the new, not new, but additional vehicles, I should say. To the, to the count at twenty thousand dollars a piece, and like we were talking about, where did that never come up with? Well, that, it could been a used vehicle or it could have been a sixty thousand dollar vehicle, so, I thought maybe let's just look, you know, somewhere in the middle there.
And. We're not acting in any, in any fault that I.
No, we just wanted the, the consensus from the board that the two sixty-six is a, a good rate that everyone is. Is happy with and that we'll move forward with a, uh, a public hearing for the ordinance of the impact of that tax rate.
And for me, uh, two sixty-six is good, and I, I haven't talked to Mr. Ringwood, but I did talk to Travis, and he's good.
This also sets the county up in the future, too, with this new tax, special tax rate, where we're pulling out vehicles from. where we're pulling out vehicles from the personal property tax. And honestly, if you know, if you, if you think about it, personal property tax, you, you're thinking only vehicles, but personal property tax includes so much more. I mean, the boats, the trailers and all that. This will actually give us something that even in the future, that you can identify clearly what you're taxing your vehicles for too.
And as things values hopefully come down, it's easy to adjust.
Yeah. Yeah.
In, in this proposed resolution, if you look at sentence twenty, are, are those dates right? Beginning January first, twenty twenty-two, ending December thirty-first, twenty-two. So we're gonna reevaluate it at that point in time. Sentence twenty twenty.
It's for that tax year?
Right.
Yeah, that's correct.
That's when we'll look at it again to see what the.
We would look at it again when we're in, look, not until we know, when does NADA come out with their value?
So we might actually be looking at maybe another reduction if, if the right things don't have, or at least in.
Yeah. Okay. So, any other questions? Great.
Perfect.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Mr. Hodgins talking about capital improvement adjustments?
Yes. Good evening, gentlemen. When the board, budget was passed, the CIP plan was passed. Fifty thousand dollars was approved for improvements, renovation at McAllister Building. That is part of a ongoing year, year after year building up for help at that building as well as thoughts of the future, realizing that we might have to expand at some point. But we also put into the plan for FY twenty-four, next fiscal year, a hundred thousand dollars for parking lot repairs and improvements here at the admin building. That number was just a placeholder, knowing that we would have to really drill down and come up, get some quotes and figure out what we had to do. To start that process, we, we brought someone over here when the schools were getting their parking lots done and their assessment was that we don't need to repave. It's not gonna cost close to a hundred thousand dollars, but the sooner the better. And they made an offer of thirty-six thousand eight hundred dollars to seal, do crack seal, patch all the holes, seal all the surfaces and repaint, both here and at the McAllister Building, parking lots, all for thirty-six thousand eight hundred dollars. So what we're proposing with your approval would be to adjust the capital plan, remove the hundred thousand dollars from FY twenty-four for parking lots and instead, out of the fifty thousand dollar McAllister budget this year, use that on parking, both that building and this one.
Did you have a look for him?
Not yet. How, what would you say their assessment, being over there? What is the state of their parking lot?
It was.
What, being over there all the time, would you say their parking lot is close to needs or something to plan for a few years?
I know there's one spot that there's a hole that's right on the edge of the road and gravel is not good.
Okay, we'll certainly have them look at that too.
Anything else over there, sure, do you think of? He said no.
We'll have something for the twenty-second?
Yes.
Any other questions? And the quality will be, I think we talked, it would be comparable to the Hamilton Holmes parking lot.
Exactly.
Which I think everyone agrees that's pretty good.
Right.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Ask Craft, open burning regulations discussion.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, if you'd indulge me for just a moment, I'd like to make the introduction to you and a bit of recognition. You know, one of the things that, over the years that I've always tried to do is to promote the presence of young people into county government, whether they be interns or shadowing or whatever the case may be. And before I even, or any of my staff had a chance to reach out to, to find somebody for the summer, we had a young man who contacted us and has been shadowing many of our departments over the last several weeks. His name is Micah Clark. Micah, stand up, let the rest of the audience see you. Micah is a, a student at Longwood University. He's a graduate of King William High School. He played sports, was very good at it, had scholarship opportunities to, to go to some places and he decided not to do that, but to settle on his life's work, political science major, is that correct? So he's, he's just an extraordinary young man that we're already proud of. And I know that his interest is serving people and working within the, the confines of government generally. And I'm just glad that he's finishing up this week in county administration. As I said, he's been with several of the other departments and they've all had high praise for him. So wanted the board to, to see what you're producing and what's to come as the years evolve as well.
Come back next.
Thank you.
Thank you. Gentlemen, tonight we continue a discussion regarding open burning in the county. And the last time we discussed this, there was quite a bit of confusion and we apologize for that. But sometimes you have to just start somewhere and then you can perfect it as you go along. And through the efforts of Ms. Branch and some citizens in the county and just a lot of input from a lot of different sources, we think we've been able to strike a pretty good compromise as to this whole issue of burning and acquiring permits versus not acquiring permits. So the first thing I'd like to bring to your attention is it's in your, it's in your packet in the form of a, of a brochure. It says, open burning regulations is the title of the brochure. And we looked at, and did research with several sources. We found Caroline County to be a pretty good source for us. So much of the language that is in here was taken from a brochure that they have. And if you go down the, the brochure, you'll see first of all, what is allowed or would be allowed in the county, which would not, a permit would not be required. And it says in King William County, open burning is allowed without a permit for the items listed below, provided three conditions are met. The burning takes place on private property. The location of the burning is at least three hundred feet away from any occupied building, unless the occupants have given permission. And the party responsible for the burning notifies King William County dispatch. And you see there what that includes campfires or other fires used solely for recreation, ceremonial occasions, outdoor and non-commercial food preparation, and for the warming outdoor workers, provided prohibited materials are not burned. And onsite destruction of leaves, trees, yards and garden trimming, provided no regularly scheduled collection services available. And onsite destruction of household waste by homeowners or tenants, provided no regularly scheduled collection service is available. That is what would be allowed without a permit at this point. I can stop at each one of these before I go on, Mr. Hodges?
Well, you can see it already.
That's all right.
Number two, isn't that three, under state code, it's three hundred feet away from brush and, and that type of thing also?
Ms. Branch, did you see anything in your research that said that?
Yeah. And then this last one on here, it almost sounds like you're talking about burning trash. I'm talking about garbage and waste.
That's only if no collection service is available, which we do have collection services available. They're not public. There are private vendors that do that.
Which is still in alignment with Caroline County.
Yeah. They do have several places where, where private vendors do not go. As we do this. We can always come back and give other questions. If not, I'll move, move on down to what, where a permit would be required. And a burn permit would be required for debris piles and bonfires that are greater than twenty-four hundred cubic feet, which in layman's terms is twenty by twenty by six. And the full conditions for such fires are provided on the burn permit application, which we'll get to in just a moment. And some of these conditions include that a fire consists of brush, stumps and similar debris, waste, and so not include demolition or construction waste or any of the prohibited items listed herein. The fire must be attended at all times. The fire must be at least five hundred feet away from any occupied building, unless the occupants have given written permission. And the respective power company must be contacted for written approval if the power lines are near the burn site. And burning shall be conducted only when the prevailing winds are away from any city, town or built-up area. The permit application must be submitted at least three days prior to the planned date of the burn. And applications can be completed online or downloaded from kingwilliamcounty.us. Open burning for forestry and agricultural purposes are regulated by the Department of Forestry and the Virginia Air Pollution Control Board and do not require a King William County burn permit. So you have to check with these authorities for any of these permits or conditions that may require. Let's stop there with what would be permitted. Or we have to have a permit. Any questions on any of those? I think that was, there was really a lot of question here about that what magnitude do you, the reasonable threshold where it separates you from what I just described of no burning, of no permit? And this seemed to be a good balance from all the provided input.
Clarify, Mr. Ask Craft. It says, no permits are required by homeowners for open burning of grass, cushions, leaves, limbs, et cetera. You are required, however, to notify the dispatch that you will be burning.
That's, that's.
Burn all.
Yes.
It just seems to be out of place.
Is it, does that carry over to the next, to the next?
Is it possible that the cut paste was? But you have to notify dispatch.
That's that.
Yeah. It seems a little overkill.
Well, that's kind, kind of a compromise, but at the end of the day, when, when you light a fire, whether you have a permit or not, you are solely responsible for it if it gets out of the way.
Not arguing, yeah. It's just dispatch is gonna be, if people follow the law, gonna be eliminated.
Well, Mr. Reece said that he only had, I think in the past year, what was it, fifteen or over twenty requests? So basically, when, when somebody calls and they're concerned about a fire, if they call dispatch, if they've been notified, the dispatcher will know automatically, well, that's a controlled burn or a debris burn and we already are aware of it and they can go from there. That, that's the intent of it.
Then you have two other sections, one dealing with forestry burning, the other one dealing with agricultural burning. And I think agriculture was the one that had the most interest. But forestry burning, open burning may be used for, for the following forest management practices, provided the burning is conducted in accordance with the Department of Forestry's Smoke Management Plan. One, to reduce forest fuels and minimize the effect of wildfires, control undesirable growth of hardwoods, control disease in pine seedlings, prepare forest land for planting and seeding, create a favorable habitat for certain species and remove dead vegetation for maintenance of railroad, highway and public utility right of way. Open burning for forestry is regulated by the Department of Forestry and does not require a King William County burn permit. I emphasize, does not require a King William County burn permit. The party responsible for the burning again must notify our dispatch. That's in every one of the sections for burning. And it, and, and they should also check with the Virginia Department of Forestry for any permits or conditions they may require. Sometimes there are extraordinary situations that aren't specifically outlined in here. So they should check with the Department of Forestry before they do, before they do anything. But they do not need a King William County permit.
Would you consider adding the, whatever links and telephone numbers for citizens to notify forestry?
Sure.
Just to make it easier.
Yeah, see, the, the website is there, but we, we will do the phone number. The website, I think, is dofvirginia.gov, but we can certainly do the phone number as well.
Now, your earlier terminology, it still would not allow you to be burning. I mean, you know, in district one, it feels a little different than a lot of places in subdivision. You still can't feel burn in that ditch because that does not.
In their other section of the code, Chris, that, that covers the towns and subdivisions?
I think a town prohibits it.
It's. HOA, HOA, HOAs or towns, yeah.
Right. What I'm getting at is generally adds B dot problem. So it's not private property.
I see your point. Yes, sir. And then finally, the agricultural burning section. Open burning is allowed for the following, destroy undesirable or diseased vegetation, clear orchards and orchard prunings, destroy empty fertilizer and chemical containers, denature seed and grain that may no longer be suitable for agricultural purposes, preventing loss from frost or freeze damage, creating a favorable habitat for certain species and destroying strains and plastics ground cover remaining in the field after being used in growing state tomatoes. And this is controlled by the Virginia Air Pollution Control Board. And it also does not require a King William County burn permit, but the party must notify dispatch, as we've talked earlier. And then they should check with the control board for any permits or conditions that may be required. And, Mr. Chairman, we can add the phone numbers there as well, just as we were going to do with forestry. And their website is, is there. So. And, and Chris and I were talking earlier, some of these could cross. And that's why it's probably important to, to notify as many as you can because what might be agriculture could also come over under the allowed area where permits are required when you're talking about brush and stumps and other debris. So, or, or even forestry, that could, you know. So I think it's really important for folks that wanna, and have to burn, that they, they notify as many groups as possible just to stay clear on, or have questions, just to be guided in the right, in the right direction. I don't think anybody ever burns to try to do something that would create problems or trying to actually get rid of problems. So that is what staff is proposing. The board really doesn't have to approve it. All of this is covered in, in state law and all we've done is just put the guidelines together as we've, as we've mirrored with our, with our localities that we've talked to. But if you'd like. Uh, but if you'd like to go on record, certainly not tonight, but the next meeting that that you approve this, uh, we can do that as well.
It also mentions phase notify dispatch may be dropped into class one misdemeanor. What law is that?
Uh, that'll be in the next ordinance that I'm getting ready to discuss. It's already, it's already uh state law and I. We were talking to the captain earlier about it. Chris and I was able to find that. Um, so. So anyway, if I could move on, uh, I'm sorry.
One quick question, sir, and maybe it's for Sheriff Walton, but when a citizen notifies dispatch that they're gonna be burning. Does that go any further than dispatch? Does it go to the stations? It's it's awareness?
If you go over to the next uh, the next page, uh. This is the burn permit information, the burn permit application when one is required. There's not a lot of difference, am I right, Chris? We may, yeah, made some uh. Maybe put things in the right place, but it is it's pretty much what it is, what it is, and we can, you can go online and uh. We like to get to a point where you can fill the information out online. I don't know that we have that interaction just yet, but at some point, you know, we'll try to do that.
That would be my next question.
Yeah, but at the very least, they can uh. They can download it, either bring it in personally, they can fax it, they could even, I guess, scan it and email it. However, they're uh, whatever they do, and you can see uh. Uh, on the, on the uh, following page, uh, at the back of it. A little illustration sometimes is helpful to show people what exactly you're gonna be doing and where you're gonna be doing it.
So, we happen to know, I know at one point it was not, you could not probably get a letter in three days. With US Post. We have an I G S as one today.
I can't, I really don't.
No reason. When I read that, I was.
Yeah, it's a good.
They send it in, they figure you got it.
Yeah.
They they've gotta wait on a response.
They should. Uh, I mean, that that's what you want to have happen, but again, if they're not notified in three days, then that's. That's somebody else's fault. And I, and I know a lot of folks who burn is tied to the weather. Uh, so I would, if somebody saw the weather forecast uh in a day or two, that they they know it's gonna be raining, I think. To to mail it or to even email it, I think they're probably better off to come up to the uh. You know, the fire EMS and get the, you get the permit. How, that's what I would recommend for folks who have a sense of urgency about it. So.
We've not talked about the costs, which I think the board was generally against any cost.
That's where we're headed. Uh. If you go now uh to the next uh, the next section, the Fire Prevention Code and some recommended changes to that. Um, you can see in yellow uh what is highlighted. Uh, those are the recommended additions. And this is the county revising our ordinance uh for the fire prevention and protection. And. The findings are that the the county fire EMS, uh, which includes uh our uh career people, Mango Hick Volunteers, West Point Volunteers. And Walkerton are recognized as an integral part of the official safety program of this county. And we've struck out the language was a little too generic. And when you go down to the section of the statewide prevention code. We take out the beginning and it says, King William County complies with the provisions of the Virginia Statewide Prevention Code in its entirety. And assigns enforcement responsibility to the King William County Fire Official, which you you've already done that in the past. Who shall be a certified fire marshal with the Commonwealth of Virginia. And as per Section one oh seven, operational permits may or may not be required by the fire official. As permitted under the ordinance with Table one oh seven point two. And the county may or may not charge a fee for such permits as provided for by the Code of Virginia. So the amount of such fees will be as established from time to time by resolution of the Board of Supervisors. So right now, you do not have on record a fee that you're charging. So unless you move forward to charge a fee, there will be no fee. To burn.
I think that was a general.
Yeah, I think everybody was pretty much in favor of it being no fee at all.
And uh, Mr. Hodges, you mentioned uh earlier, if you go up to the top of that, the violations of chapter. Section thirty four dash one, unless otherwise specifically provided in this chapter. A violation of any provisions of this chapter so constituted class one misdemeanor as provided in section one dash seven. I think that uh, that gives you your uh, your your source as to where this comes from. So this would be a change in the ordinance, and uh, we would uh, bring this back to you for a public hearing as as all ordinances are. And uh, do we have that for the twenty second or will we, it is the twenty second. If you so desire to have it, if you need more time, we can do it in September.
Well, I think everybody knows that I'm fully in favor of it.
Do you want the uh, do you want the brochure language to be something that you would adopt as well? Or are you satisfied that it is, it it is state law? It's not anything generic. It's just tying everything together. So we'll just do the ordinance on uh, on August twenty second then.
Stan Scraper, for me, I'd like to thank Strong Robinson for all of his input in this process. He sent us a lot of information.
He did.
And he made me uh fully aware, and I do appreciate it.
He brought uh, he 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 brought much to the table. I I know Mr. Williams, uh, who's a passport member. He had some journal concerns about some things, and we've uh, you know, I was able to talk to him. I mean, the chairman did at the last planning meeting. Uh, so we've taken a lot of feedback, trying to eliminate the confusion and make it a much easier process and uh. And I think it defines the character of the county uh in a way that uh, it's not going to. To bother anybody, but it's going to continue to allow the freedom to do what you, what they do when they do burn. And I want to thank Ms. Branch, particularly for her research. She did a lot of research on this project. So. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you.
I guess we can go ahead and leave you. Hamilton Homes, uh.
Oh, sorry.
Sports facility upgrades.
Mr. Chairman, uh. It's. It's interesting on a night when we honor youth sports, um, that this this item here. Is all about uh youth sports in the, in the county, and it's about uh, uh, your football program, and I call it your football program because. Even though the Raiders are a private, not-for-profit organization. They have been involved in uh King William County for a, for a long time. And I think uh, it was noted that when we honored the football program. Uh, for its state championship, uh, back in December or January, or whenever it was. That just about to a person, every one of those young men had gone through the Raider program. And uh, so. What has happened over the years is that we have dedicated um. A lot of resources of mostly in kind uh from the county, but still some of it, there was a cost. To make the recreation pro uh field uh a really good place to play for our Little League program. Uh, every year we've added a new feature. We've done other things over there that's for the citizens generally. But our Little League has benefited over there. But we've never, and and you know, somebody here is talking to you that doesn't have a lot of history of it, but from what I've been told. There's never really been a dedicated effort to try to improve uh or upgrade the facilities that the Raiders use. Now, the expanded recreation program that we hope that the Hill Group will present to the board uh later on, probably early part of next year. We hope to be able to provide a new facility for football and for soccer, because those are our growing sports in the county. But we know that any, any type of commitment by the board. Will be at least a one to two-year process. So the Raiders have an opportunity to utilize Hamilton Homes and, but. The concern is, is that the facility is not up to grade, especially to what, to when we invite visitors to come. And and view the games compared to where we go when our uh, when our team travels and our parents go. So there was four or five things that were uh, that were brought to the attention that had a cost to them. Uh, one was the upgrade of the concession stand. The other one was uh to repair uh, uh, I think it was two sheds. Uh, another was the press box area, uh, which which had a shed to it. Um, there was a little bit of electricity that needed to be run to one of the sheds so that when darkness comes. That they can see to put their equipment away at the end, and then probably the most important thing was to um, make the playing surface safe. There was a number of holes, a number of ruts, and it's easy when it's, when a a field is used for those things to happen, but there's never been any intention. Really paid uh, uh, to do with that. So we created an ad hoc committee several months ago. This committee's been meeting to try to uh identify and then look at ways that we could. Uh, at least prepare this facility over the next couple of years so that it has a uh. Respect among the peers and the and the other uh, localities that come in and play. So today, uh, the field has been taken care of. The school provided the topsoil so far, and our maintenance crew helped to uh spread that. So I think we've taken care of the game field. Um. The school in it, in its last meeting said that they were going to look to uh repair the press box. Uh, and that, of course, at the bottom of that is a shed. What is still outstanding is the concession stand area and the other uh shed where they store all their equipment. Uh, to provide uh lumber and, you know, I guess nails or whatever else goes with that. Uh, to repair those two things is a sum of twenty five hundred dollars. Uh, we pared that down, way down from the request that was thirty some thousand, because it was agreed that uh, although you'd like to have bleachers. They are costly. They run about twenty one thousand dollars. You'd like to have a bench where the team sit on, but that runs about five thousand dollars. So, um, if we're looking at the bare minimum to try to get through this year, and we're really running out of time for the opening of the season, because it starts in September. We would need uh, to authorization. Committee to have our maintenance crew to go out and make the repairs in those two uh. Um, small facilities, and then uh, we would have to do that. Out of a contribution from, or my recommendation would be a contribution from the profit fund, which is not interfere at all with split levy uh contributions. So. I don't ask you to vote on it tonight, but I, the request would be to uh, to approve up to twenty five hundred dollars. Uh, for materials uh to uh, to repair um, the two, the two areas that I just described. Uh, for use of not only the Raiders. But our Parks and Recreation Soccer Program also uses that facility, and I know that the Raiders would probably let them. Uh, I know they would, they'll probably use a concession stand if they needed it, and uh maybe even use the storage shed if they needed it.
In the essence of time of the season coming up, should we go ahead and authorize that tonight?
I would like to do it.
And if. I don't agree. We got forty percent of the board without you.
I understand. That's why I didn't anticipate.
And I did, and we just, we talked about this. You know, outside of meetings that we would not bring up certain things significant tonight.
It's not a lot of money.
It's not a lot of money, but it's taxpayer money and two districts aren't represented. And I think you're gonna approve it, but I would like to see them.
Well, sure, I'm I'm on that committee, and and the Raiders have been given very little over the years, I can tell you that. And and they're not greedy. You know, those those young men, they, just like Mr. Ashcraft said, almost to the man. Every last one of the state championship ballplayers came through that program.
Did you play for the Raiders? You know, you always played against.
We're gonna have a long conversation.
And that's me. I I I would not agree with voting on it tonight. I think it'll be a go on the twenty second.
That's why, you know, they're already practicing, soon to be, have they started yet?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. If 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 you really believe that it is just a formality to approve it. Uh, at the August twenty second meeting, I could go ahead and give maintenance. Uh, and Steve, who oversees that, uh, the chance to go and try to find the lumber. Uh, because I don't know with supply chain being as it is, it may take a week or two to get that in here, then they could be. Kind of getting uh, getting that together, maybe uh be up for the start.
I think the storage sheds, uh, that was mostly roof, uh roofing.
Yes, that's right. So. So I, but I don't wanna overstep that, but I'm just saying, if you think, if you think uh.
My feelings are it it'll go without a hitch, but you know, well, you haven't been up here very long, but. Over the years, we've walked in here thinking everything was gonna go through.
I understand.
It was a rough time, but.
We can wait. It's uh, that's uh, that's which way you wanna go, that's fine. I'm, I appreciate your sentiment that you understand the. Uh, of this group and its presence in the county as long, as long in in uh, being recognized, so, yeah.
And it's, it's a good thing to do, and I think we can do it. Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. It's just we don't have all our. And and I'm not, if we got four, I'd be good, but we got forty percent.
Sure, sure. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to the Board of Supervisors' request, Mr. Hodges.
I'm really, okay, I just overlooked that. I really don't know a better thing like, like uh. You know, with the crosswalks, they have paved those now, and it, and the bricks are gone. My opinion is they ought to leave it like that and and not press them, because I'm not sure what that's gonna do to that pavement later. Uh, that's, that's about it. And again, it's very heartening that uh, Rizmore passed. It was a total shock to me that I found out that. That's why.
Uh, I don't have a whole lot, but in relation to what Bill just spoke about. The passing, uh, Mrs. Roseland Lovelace passed away. Her and her husband were. Great people. Uh, they attended Sharon Baptist Church for many years before they moved to to Hanover. And Ed, I know you went to school with the Lovelaces. You share my sentiments on that, but oh, that's it.
Okay, I really don't have anything uh, I'm interested in getting the Raiders, the the whole enterprise and make it pull it under a public-private partnership. Which is a buzzword these days. If you can't do it privately, you don't want to do it publicly, combine the efforts. And uh, I think it's proven itself to, to developing a strong youth ethic. Evidenced by football team this year and hopefully in the future. Again, it was wonderful to be able to recognize another state champion team. It's absolutely incredible. Those young girls, uh, got to watch the game. Somebody was Facebook riding it, the last game. It was touch and goes. It seemed like for a few innings, but they pulled it out. And with that, if I could get a, was a motion to convene and close meeting?
Chair, before we get there, uh, I'm gonna object again to one of the items. And that's the performance item on personnel. Without the other board members here, I don't think we should discuss any kind of performance of personnel. I'm good with doing the legal thing.
Can we, is it gonna use any value in having a closed meeting without being able to discuss?
Well, I think you said the one item, but I.
They, well, it's legal matters on here, uh, dealing with less the.
It's all time.
The actual litigation, so.
One is, one is legal. Well, if you wanted an update on, on the, uh, legal matter, uh, that would, that would be the performance, uh, valuable. We can, we can put that on for a second. But I thought you, the board wanted, uh, an update on, uh. On, on the legal, on the legal side.
I'm good with that. That, it's the personnel.
Right. If this takes you to, uh, any questions, that's as well. Proceed with it. Neither one of them, uh. We could, we could take a vote out for it, like that.
Okay, what's wrong? It's a motion to adjourn.
Should I move?
Second.
Ms. Branch?
Hi. Hi.
All right, meeting is adjourned.